All right, I would like to call this Monday, January 15th, 2018, regular session meeting of the Somerset School Board to order at 7:02 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please stay standing and join me in a moment of silence to honor Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day is celebrated on the third Monday in January each year, near his January 15th birthday, so today is actually his birthday, to honor his legacy as a civil rights activist who dedicated his life to work for peace, social justice, and opportunity for all Americans. And Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s work inspires us as we work towards our vision to engage, educate, and empower. Thank you, please be seated. Peter, could you please do a roll call?
Yep, Bruce Bellardin.
Here.
Katie Thurman.
Here.
Marie Colbath.
Here.
Nancy Gruffel.
Here.
Courtney Kurkowski.
Here.
Catherine Cranston.
Here.
Patty Shakner.
Together, our district mission is together we engage, educate, and empower all learners, bridging their passions to pathways to create successful futures and positively contribute to our local and global communities. Our core values are we believe each and every person is capable of success, we believe each and every person is accepted and valued, we believe in empowering all learners, we believe change is our opportunity for growth, we believe involved communities foster strong schools, we believe lifelong learning is essential for personal growth, and we believe in cultivating leaders. Item 1E are our protocol reminders, so board members, please take a moment to review our protocols. Item 1F is the approval of our agenda. Is anyone willing to make a motion to approve our agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Marie, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Courtney. So we have a motion made by Marie Colbath and seconded by Courtney Kurkowski to approve our agenda. Board members, I would point out that open enrollment is listed on our agenda twice. It is under item 4A, Educational Delivery and Learner Connectedness. It is also under our consent agenda as item 8E. I apologize for the duplication, we had a quick turnaround in our agenda between our work session and this week because of the Christmas holiday. What would, how would board members like to address that particular item?
I would appreciate it for discussion, item 4, please.
Okay, so given that we have one board member who would like it under item 4 for discussion, we will address it under item 4 and when we get to consent agenda, look for a motion to approve items A through D in the consent agenda. Are there any other questions or concerns about the agenda?
If it's discussed and you're okay with it, are you okay with the agreement and acceptance at that consent agenda point after the discussion? Are you comfortable with that? Since it was posted in all places, would you be okay with it after the discussion?
Well, I think we can deal with it at that point.
So we can wait then? Right, but if at that point you need it approved?
Do we not need to make a motion?
To do it at that first point, okay. Very good.
All right, any other questions about the agenda? All right, all those in favor of approving the agenda in which we will be addressing the topic of open enrollment under item 4, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say nay. And the motion passes six to zero. So we're now on to item 2, reports, and we'll begin with 2A, the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll go through this fairly quickly, I added a couple pieces here, but one, I have some principals I'd like to come just to give two comments on what they did for MLK Day today, so. Shannon here?
Hello.
Yeah, why don't you start?
Okay. Sorry, I'm fresh off basketball practice, so I need to think, okay, what did we do today? So I sent you guys ahead of time just some copies of our slides because I thought that was easier for you to take a look at versus me trying to explain kind of what we did. So we set aside from 8 to 9 o'clock this morning, we ran kind of an altered schedule. I'm really dedicating that entire time to celebrating Dr. King and kind of the movement and all the things kind of behind that. We chose to do it that way just to ensure that every kid in the building would be able to participate in the activities that we did. We have a lot of kids in the afternoon that are gone for school to work and youth options. We kind of wanted to start off the day kicking it off with celebrating that. Our social studies department put together some amazing information for teachers to be able to share. Students reported to their homeroom, spent an hour in some discussion, watching some video clips, really kind of encouraging to have to have some organic conversations within their classroom. Many of the staff reported, "I didn't get through all the slides," which was totally fine. We wanted people to have more information rather than not enough. And then the goal was, at the end of that hour, to have at least a really good start or potentially finish a poster that kids were putting together in each homeroom. Each homeroom had a theme of something that they had a reading about. One room had Malcolm X, for example, one room had Rosa Parks. We had, I think, 20 different themes throughout the building. And they needed to create a poster from their homeroom that kind of represented all the things that they were talking about within their homeroom. So so far I've received five posters, and I think I sent you a couple pictures of that too. Some homerooms are like, "We're not even closed it down yet, can we have more time to work on it?" Which was great too. First time that I think in a long time that the high school has actually dedicated some specific intentional time versus just teachers kind of addressing it potentially in the classroom. And you know, sometimes it kind of worked and maybe sometimes it didn't, but this way we, you know, felt pretty good about the fact that every kid in the building had the opportunity to participate in that today. So good feedback, I don't know, you guys were a part of the activities this morning, but we already, as a staff, had some discussions just kind of informally about, okay, next year can we maybe try this or do this different? And I think the big message with kids today was, you know, this isn't a one and done, you know, from 8 to 9, this is all we're going to do is kind of talk about equity diversity, but really kind of infusing that in all that we do, which I think we do a pretty good job of anyway, right now. But just, you know, kind of thinking about some ways that we can kind of further expand on this day and the future. And actually, in the high school, we had a lot of kids with some good discussion about, "Why do we have school today?" You know, so many homerooms kind of started that, started off their time together, "Why are we here?" You know, so. I think it was good stuff, and like I said, some things I think we'll treat, but.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sarah?
Okay, so being, we see all the kids.
In all the classes. Every person kind of takes every grade level, work together as a team to address it in different ways. So some of my teachers, so my art teacher, for example, with all the kids that she saw today, did all the artists that have been influenced by Dr. King and how their artwork today can carry on his message going forward. So in classrooms today, I saw kids giving speeches about leaders of the Ku Klux Klan and Dr. King and all of those, those histories. Our eighth grader right now is actually in the middle of their civil rights unit, so it's very timely. They read Mississippi, I'm trialing 55, The Story of Evans Hill. And then we bring in a speaker from the cities as well. So that was happening today. I Have a Dream speech was shared throughout. We love Kid President in the Middle School, he has a really nice clip that kids can relate to. The thing that I shared with you had to do with quotes from Dr. King and kids saying how it impacted them and then how can we keep that message alive and how it impacts today.
What class was that one done in?
That was the seventh grade, it was ELA plus, so.
I love that, how did it fly today, that was really a good question.
Trying to keep that out, and you know, and I opened the day over the intercom with, Coretta Scott King has, "Why do we celebrate?" And I, it's very long, and I cut it down for our kids and talked about, you know, really getting down to that serving others. And so talked about that with the kids and how you can just serve other people as well as we go forward. Handled a little bit differently at each grade level, but kids definitely had the opportunity to experience in multiple classes.
Excellent.
Yeah, great, they hit the elementary school. We went, Martin's Big Words is a book that you'd see, you know, pretty commonly, especially JKK won. Second grade, did a writing contest amongst their, you know, there's a whole grade, that was kind of a neat thing. Mr. Server's class, you might have seen out on Facebook or webpage, did a big mural on the end of their hallway, and that's, I mean, it's taller to me, really neat thing. And you saw a lot of people there admiring it, you know, in the last week and today. Third and fourth grade also did some reading, but did a fair amount of writing. Different kind of themes within it, you know, one was more respect, one was more similarities and differences between a few different civil rights leaders. So very good stuff. Last year I got the ability to go down and see where Martin Luther King Jr. was born and see, really see there the church that he was dad preachers at and then see kind of the museum. So I submitted those pictures out to staff and they used them and they have become talks a little about it. So a lot of fun, really neat to get out in the classrooms. Many of the kidder in classrooms kind of did the activity where they had kids who had dark colored hair got to play a game, and kids with white colored hair had to do a worksheet or something and then talked about how they were being mean and how not fair, and so a lot of activities like that. So really, really fun stuff. I mean, I spent most of the morning going around classrooms and it was just a really neat day to be at school.
JK even had homework on Martin Luther King.
Yep, yep, they had some stuff to add to your homework. Yeah, I was over here in the afternoon group and some really neat stuff that they did. So just a neat day that we got to take part in and have school and kids and those activities. And I would say very good conversations, you know, the book wasn't the end of it, it was the conversations that came after. And some of the questions these kids had and comparisons, and one of the big thing teachers were after is, Martin Luther King grew up just like you, he had grandparents, he had parents, he had all those things. It's just he wasn't, you know, wasn't allowed to be like everyone else. And a lot of the things about how he fought with the Heidi Olsen kindergarten class, I was saying, how he fought without being violent, and it was really neat, you know, how the buses, for a year nobody had the boycott, nobody rode the buses, and how that made a big difference. You could just see there, it all was there, so really fun stuff, so. Thank you, any questions?
Thanks. Thank you to all three of you, and the charge was that today every student is discussion time, instruction time on Martin Luther King. Thanks to those guys for hitting the head on them and doing it, so that went well. The other piece I have on here, and I sent you a copy late this afternoon, I didn't have a chance to work on that at all, it was in the contract that I was asked to have a stricken out version of it. So I had to go back to the old format that I originally signed, and I changed everything. So the numbers and everything in there, the dates are all right, plus were the two things I asked for. But when we finish this, we're going to put it into the new format that Trevor has, but I didn't want to confuse it by throwing a new format in there. So again, the copy I sent you, you can use for discussion, what have you, whatever we decide there, then we can transfer that information onto the format and that'll blend right in with everyone else's administrative contract, so. The election, you know, this link takes you just to the page where we have it on the website under Board News, and the names on there I believe are in, are they in ballot order now?
They're in alphabetical order.
Alphabetical order. We did have the drawing, is it a drawing, do we call it a drawing? Selection process for, which is very documented, and the order of the ballots and what have you. So that's all, that's all set. Two things about the election coming up. Talked to Becca the Chamber, she is trying to put together for primary a forum on February 1st, Thursday, so kind of pencil it in for that Thursday night. So there'll be more information come on that. They already do, the Chamber already has a candidate forum for the 24th, for the April election, on March, March 24th, so that's on Pancakes and Politics at the elementary school. So I'll let you know as soon as I get that information out.
So did you say Thursday or Friday?
It's Thursday, February 1st, right now, they're firming that up for the primary. The election's the 20th, but the forum, candidate forum will be, and that's just the, just the school forum. Pancakes and Politics will have whatever other elections are going to also, so. And that's on the 24th of March. Enrollment, we're down, from last year to this time, we're down 39 students. From last month, we're down one, so that's just of that. But you know, when you look at that, I noticed this today when we were looking through this and we're starting to look at the open enrollment form and what have you, the high school capacity is wrong. It was never changed after you put four or nine classrooms on. So it says we have 400. The capacity is four, well, we've got 461, and it's nowhere near being crowded. So when you figure in nine classrooms that were added on there, we actually have an additional 200, 250 seats, depending on what you factor into class sizes and that. So you know, our actual capacity there, you know, somewhere around, I would say, 6 to 6 and 1/2. But this is why we got a wall going through this, the whole district and recalculating things. When you get a building of the age of the middle school and the high school, you know, you've got design capacity, just what every room's designed for to be used for, but then you've got building capacity which I would say a lot of the rooms in the high school aren't being used the way they were designed four years ago. So there's a difference between those two, because if it's designed for, if it's designed for 600 kids, I know I can probably get 900 in there using spaces differently. But again, there's a balance in there, so. Once we get, once they go through it, we'll have accurate, accurate capacity numbers for the building. I would say the elementary and middle school are pretty close, the high school is way off, so. And that's, that's a, it's a pretty good guess, you know, somewhere around 600, 6 and 1/4, I would say. So just make a note of that there. Strategic plan, I linked that report I gave last, last week in the closed session, just an update on all the initiatives there, so I don't think I need to go through that again, but you have it again in another location on here. The Human Resource Audit, McGrath is reworking the compensation piece because we had to clean up a few of the, some of the FTE counts were wrong, and so they're cleaning that up. They also have the handbook corrections that we've made, and the corrections and the changes were just format, and some of the things that have never been used. What's going to happen, they're going to take it, they're going to recommend us what should be in this handbook and what shouldn't be, and then it's going to come to you as board members to say, okay, here's where we're at with that, and then from there, see what your feelings are, then we'll take it to the Play Council and, you know, talk about there too and see what we need to do with it, and then come back to the board for final approval. So that's the process there. District vehicle, we have a pickup that is just shot. We don't know if it was a late 70s or early 80s truck, but there's nothing left to it anymore. Doesn't run, so we need a new truck. I actually think we had collectors plates on it, we didn't, we should have. So we're looking at a new, not a new vehicle, but a newer vehicle somewhere in that 15,000 to 20,000 dollar range. We need a truck, a pickup truck here. So I'll come back a little bit later when we find, you know, kind of the neighborhood we're looking at, but it's time replaced because again, it's gone. And then the AASA reports I linked down there, just to give you an idea of the work that we were doing last week in DC with the legislative, with our, our agenda. And actually, I got to meet Tammy Baldwin, got to, you know, got to meet the chief of staff for Johnson. You know, in his office, Senator Johnson is into involved education, so, but Tammy's got a lot going with that, and had a good conversation with her. You know, some of the things on those agendas are pretty high priority even for us. You know, Washington's a long way away, but these things impact, those things, it's E-Rate, teacher development and training, because they're really looking at taking the non-discretionary military, the non-military discretionary funding, and that's where we're getting the money for some of these programs, and that's education. So we could have a big impact in teacher development, teacher training, you know, on the federal level, and that all trickles, trickles on, because that's one of our biggest concerns, especially rural Wisconsin, is that, how do you, how do you find teachers? And we're going to have a couple vacancies that we're going to have trouble with this next year. So again, it's, take a look at those documents, they will cure some, you know, guarantee of that. But there, you'll see the trickle down to where they do affect, affect us. One of the, one of the more interesting presentations we had, the bureau chief from CNN for the Washington Bureau, and the rule of the day, both of them came in and spoke to us just about this whole concept of fake news and news and just the whole reporting on their perception of how they present the news. And regardless, you know, the president calls them their enemies, what have you, they're the enemy of every elected official because they have to take, they have to prove things. And it was, it was very interesting, a whole outlook, I have those entities now. After that presentation, it was really, really good. So, that's all I have.
Are you doing the positive recognition during this report?
I have it down just a little bit further.
It's down on the.
Thank you, apologies.
No, no, it just happened.
So we, any questions for Mark or?
When we'll get started. Just talked to them today, they're going to get in here, it was, I would say, we're in Milwaukee for a school board deal this week, so they'll come in as quick as we can. Hoping to get, get them in this week, but we'll probably get them in next week and start working.
You know, while you're working with that, we'll.
Vaughn's going to take the lead, so we'll get the A-team right off the bat. So Vaughn will be the lead, I don't know.
Any other questions? All right, we'll move on to item 2B, financial reports. Are there any questions for Dave on this month's financial reports? Hearing none, we will move on to item 2C, school board member reports. Bridging Somerset, I don't believe there's been a meeting since our last one, but there's one coming up.
In February, yes.
So you should have received invitation. If not, if you're interested, let Mark know and he can forward it. In the evening, these next ones, or?
I believe this one will be, we've tried to hold it on Saturdays, and it's just for new members, it's all elected officials, from school board, village, the township, the chamber, and the foundation. And we divvied up, basically we did a SWAT and an environmental scan and identified the needs and direction of where we're, where we want to go. And we divvied up a bunch of, identified ownership of some of the issues, like I think as a school district, we were going to take on the communication component for, for the area. That doesn't, that doesn't mean we're going to do everything, but we're going to be the lead on that. I think the foundation is the one that's doing those surveys for those talking sessions, listening sessions. And that's, so they've been very active, so. So next meeting will be taking off of some of the, finding out what the different entities pay for their charges. And anyone else could join in, but we really want the elected officials, you know, as many as we can get. I think we have to wrap up.
Next is the CISA update. We just had a meeting via Zoom, which I really appreciate, that means they let us all be in our houses through over the internet, it's really convenient that way because we're all coming from a lot of different locations, which makes it a really nice, Catherine, you've served on that before, it's a nice opportunity to share thoughts and ideas. And one of the things that came up both last month and this month, and Patty has talked about it as well, and maybe you have too with your meeting with the teachers, the wellness, it seems to be quite a strong emphasis this year. They do have some guidance, and maybe we use it, Trish, you may be aware with the shared services and getting some training for teachers so that we better support, well, actually, any of us could benefit from better learning how to support when stress is high, when students are not behaving in a way that we are accustomed to. And I wondered if we took advantage of some of those shared services, I suspect we do, but if not, maybe we could consider that. And the second thing, that one of the districts has already moved to having a mental health therapist right in, in the district. And so it's something that they feel very, has been very beneficial, and they're considering bringing that person to come and speak to the whole CISA Board of Control. And I thought, you know, it might be something of interest too. Also, the March PAC meeting is coming up, and that is something where everyone and anyone can come to that from the board, so we would have to sign on for that, March 21st. It's a cost to the district for $50 each of us, but it's usually very informative. Their speakers this year, I think, are Tony Hevers and, oh, I don't remember the other, that was me, and I can't read my notes. But, so that's coming up, and then our shared service contract, you're probably well aware of that, we would have to put approval on that, so that's hopefully on the agendas over the next six weeks. There's specific dates that that would have to be approved by the board for. So that's all. Always interesting.
Is March 20th, the first, an all-day thing or an evening thing?
No, it's an evening thing, and they usually provide a dinner, and that's why there's the $15 charge to pay for some of that catering, and also for the speaker that comes, you know, from the distance that Tony Hevers is coming, and it's usually pretty interesting.
Next is community education from Patty Shakner, and she's not here to provide an update. Is there anything that you would share with her?
The catwalk's almost done, you know, so it's, I would expect by our next meeting there would be a lot to talk about, or show. Because they're definitely planning on classes coming up here now, kind of in Jersey, springtime, like February, so.
Next is employee council, Katie?
Well, we have meeting, a couple of them, and, but the second one was a while ago now.
Yeah.
We've had a holiday, so, so we just maybe get them on schedule, but we have a good idea of what our focus should be on, and I think everybody has shown appreciation that we're doing this, so.
Well, the, January we knew wasn't meant, we missed all the conferences and meetings and things like that. We're not ready with the handbook yet, because that's the next thing I want to tackle is the handbook. And I would say, you know, we'll set a February date, and we should be able to start going over some sections of it. Probably not the whole thing, because it's going to take a while to go through. But I really want you guys to have a look at it first, so, you know, we know what we're talking about when we bring it, when we bring it up, so.
Probably the biggest issue was educator effectiveness being tied to compensation.
Which was because the last meeting, the last meeting.
Well, DPI.
DPI, said, "Don't do it."
Well, there's, yeah, that's one thing, talking with McGrath, you know, when we look at the compensation study, it is very interesting, but again, that's not ready until it gets cleaned up, because I don't want bad data out there. But, you know, we're talking mostly with the non-certified, the teacher's schedule, you know, the schedule itself is, is good, it's intact, but it's how it's been, how it's been used has created some issues. And then also the side, side compensation pieces need to be looked at, and that's what we're talking about here for the different things that you've thrown money at to, as far as educator effectiveness or other things. Because the, those are the, treasury, PDP, is that the money that was, that was the program?
The PDP is discontinued, yes.
Yeah, discontinued, and there was how much type of that?
A stipend every five years.
Yeah, so, I mean, things like that, that we have to look at, how are we going to recompensate that or if we are, programs aren't there anymore. So there's definitely some compensation pieces there, but we're just, it's coming together, but not as fast as I would like it to be, but we need to do it right and well.
All right, the Memorial Scholarship Fund Committee does not meet in January, so no update other than the application is out there and the students can be applying. Then the WASB Conference, board members, I linked an article there for you that was from this month's, that was the amazingness that we each get. This month's school news, so Catherine, I hope you'll start getting this soon, and I don't know if getting it, Courtney. So it was in this month's school news about the importance of training for board members, because none of us go to school to learn how to do this, and education's changing all the time, and governance is changing all the time. And then it also laid out some steps that have. And then it also laid out some steps that a board can take to take advantage, or to leverage, when their board members do attend training. So one of the things mentioned in that article is publicly announcing that people are attending the conference, and then scheduling time to have reports after that. So the WASB conference is this week, and Mark, myself, and Patty are attending. And I will, we will schedule for our February 5th work session, the opportunity for Mark and Patty and I to share some of what we learned, and we'll turn everything on Google Drive forward for everyone to be able to look at. Then the next thing on there is the WASB delegation, which occurs at the conference. Kate, Courtney served as our delegate last year. So there essentially are resolutions that are considered by the WASB, so they're linked there for you. And so one delegate from each school board that is present at the conference attends a meeting, and Courtney's gonna give me some tips about holding up my paddle, right?
Yes.
And so essentially, by majority of delegates at the convention, is how WASB determines what their legislative priorities for advocacy will be for the year. So it was linked there for board members to review. And if you have any concerns about ones that you believe that we should not support, or strong feelings about ones that we should, if you could let me know, I will then be able to represent us at the delegation.
I liked all of them.
You liked all of them? Were there any ones that were concerning to anyone?
I, I think, I like their stance on vouchers, where they said that, from a financial standpoint, they wanted districts to make it publicly clear how much of an impact vouchers would have on the actual district. And I, and I did like that. I, I did have a question about, I know that there's the Racine and there's the Milwaukee voucher, but then there's the Wisconsin, and would that apply to us? And do we have any at this time?
Do we have any students who are, have applied for vouchers to attend?
Dave, do you have any? Any students that we have vouchers?
Not to my knowledge.
No, not a thing.
And I guess I don't, I, my understanding is that schools can apply, private schools can apply to be able to receive vouchers across the state of Wisconsin, just like expanded beyond Racine and Milwaukee. I don't know if any of our regional schools have done that.
I think even in our meetings, you know, so.
So it's something that could impact us, but I'm not aware of any schools that are...
It's potential.
Yes, it does have a...
Private school in your district.
And it also said that they support that we would, if someone does apply, that we are not mandated for by transportation.
We've usually done the transportation as a way of coordinating the schedules upfront. That goes way back to when Mr. Seidel was actually the principal. We had a wonderful working relationship with the school. And I think it's been a win-win because those kids generally come into the public school system. They are having a meaningful relationship, has always been to the benefit of.
And to St. Anne's, I have no problem with that. But there's other private schools that are thirty miles away, and I don't wanna be mandated to have my tax dollars paid for that.
Well, and I'm actually surprised that we do not have a private high school in St. McCray County yet, because we have a significant population that goes across the river. And, I mean, vouchers makes it more feasible for that to come about. Any other feedback for me on the WASB resolutions? If you think of anything, feel free to let me know, please. Then the next item that I put on there is the 2017-18 school board meeting calendar. So at our last meeting, we had a discussion of adding board development on the fourth Monday of the month. So I asked Asia to add those dates in red for the board to consider. So potentially, if we added them in January, February, March, and April, then we might wanna break in May and June, and we might look at considering how we would continue that or discontinue that in the next year's calendar. And the feedback that I heard from the board is that we would like to, if we, to meet from seven to eight-thirty, and spend forty-five minutes looking at policy, that is fairly quickly in time moving through them, so potentially an explanation and questions, to inform, even more thorough explanation for our, and discussion for our work session. And then forty-five minutes of board development focused on our board goal, with a very strict eight-thirty end time. So if that's accurate, and the board would like to move forward with these four specific dates, then Mark and I can work to plan them, so that they flow with each other to work towards our board goals and policies that Neil and me is us to look at and update.
As long as they're posted, I'm fine with that.
I'm not fine with the seven o'clock, I'm not, really not.
But we want to include everyone, or make it available to everyone.
Oh, right.
I think to start off with, we need to pick something and get our policy and board development wheels moving. Hopefully, we can include as many people as possible, and if we try it for a month or two and we don't have enough, and it's not supporting our work at the work session and regular session, then we can adjust.
We still, we were talking before too, that we need to make sure that these get PDF, put it in the actual agenda for the work session of the next one, so that it's not, so if you weren't there, if someone wasn't there, at least they see what.
And I think it would be advantageous, actually, for us to do a brief board development just on Google Docs, so that board members feel comfortable of how they can see, I mean, we would only work in commenting mode. And really, I think, board development would mainly be for an explanation and questions, 'cause often our first reading, we just have a lot of questions, and then the other team seeks clarification for us. So I think we could focus that initial policy review during board development on explanation and questions. And then what is presented for a first reading at the work session would be more succinct, I think. And so I think we'd be able to move through our full board discussion more effectively, so hopefully then be able to approve them at the regular session. But we could do a little bit of brief training on Google Docs, so that board members understand the commenting and the revision history.
Just the one that rehashes every time.
Absolutely. Yep, that would definitely help us in our efficiency.
Do, do the majority of you guys want that Google Docs training? I have a few, I'm very interested.
I mean, Tom, I mean, just run it through.
I don't wanna spend ninety minutes on it.
Yeah.
I mean, give a little pre-test and see what we need.
But, you know, I mean, we had, we've had problems even just getting all of us logged in to see the comments. We need to get us all on spot and sign in, and then answer any questions.
Check the minutes.
Check. So, am I hearing consensus that Mark and I can move ahead planning board development sessions that will be posted for the four dates that are on the agenda? Then other, are there any other reports from school board members?
Excuse me, I did, District Social, it looks like, right now we got slated for the twenty-fifth, I think that's a Thursday.
Of January.
And I'll get a note out to you, you just put, we're planning before we're putting concrete. This is working up a measure right now, at which we'll deal with the cost of it. But right now, it looks like that's the best night.
Thank you. So now, just, oh.
Question. I really love it that you're all here, but I'm wondering if we can consider moving the positive recognition and the student reps reports a little bit sooner, should they want to? I'm just asking, if it's something we could, I love that you guys are taking it. But just something to consider, that's something we moved to the beginning of the meetings, like people, if they, like you feel, if it's running late, we have that opportunity to kind of pin it out and...
So I will note your requests of that topic and add it to the list of topics to consider in work days. And likely, that would also come up in our board goal to address our policy about agenda, so how we function effectively. So, now we are on to item two D, Hunter and Emma, our student representatives. Your resource.
Is the wrong thing linked?
I think you had the wrong thing.
Oh.
There you go.
There you go, thank you. Okay, well, here's our January board report. So we'll start off with some sports. Boys' basketball is currently four and eight, captains Bennett Blargen and Will Pilicich are slowly leading their team to success. Girls' basketball is five and eight, they have a very young team and do not give up, and they have lost some very close games. Cheer played second a couple of weeks ago, and last weekend swept their competition. Hockey is working very hard, Jack Peterson is their leading scorer, with seventeen out of the team's thirty-eight goals. The dance team had first in all three dances at Prairie Farm last weekend, and this weekend in Prescott, senior quad play style conference, and they had first place hip-hop, and second place kick. And then wrestling, a of our wrestlers placed at Northern Badger, which is a very large amount. And Garrett Hap placed first at the Nurtment Invitation.
Alright, so we had play auditions last weekend, or last week, and the play is in March, we're doing Peter Pan, so that's really exciting. They had fifty-four students audition, which is the most ever, so there's two full cast, which is really exciting. And then robotics are going to a state competition, or, yeah, they're going to the state competition, and they beat their competition a hundred and four to seventy-one. Captains Henry Ferber and Glenn Corber are going to win it all this season.
That's great.
So we have a lot of fun planned in this next couple of weeks. In February, we are doing Polar Days, which is like our winter homecoming. And new this year, we are doing like, kind of like a, it's similar to Homecoming King Queen, but we're doing it for the younger kids. So freshmen and sophomores are gonna be the only ones eligible for it, and we're gonna do like a little court for that, and it's gonna be really fun. We're planning on having two pep assemblies and maybe incorporating some other schools into that, and our fun dress-up days. And don't forget our talent show, which we would love to have any of you come audition, so you can see your jazz.
I'll sing for you.
One thing that we wanted to talk about was school spirit. It's definitely the highest it's been in a long, long time. We have Ms. Donnelly and one of her amazing selfies with us at the hockey games. And our attendance at hockey games, basketball games, wrestling meets, I don't think we've had two kids show up to wrestling meets in the past, and now we have a student section, which is really exciting.
I think last month, they, senior Justin Reevard was featured on WCCO for his "Just in Case", which is his door lock safety thing, so that was really cool and really exciting.
And then I also linked the thing on WCC's page up on there.
And then, I think this was before Christmas, some of the AP art and like drawing two and painting two classes had the opportunity to make artwork for the grieving place. And the idea was kind of that it was something that people could see, you know, like to cheer them up after their loved ones passed away. And that was really cool, they got to go show their art to Patty Shachner, who isn't here, but, and then hang it up, and yeah.
They showed it to the St. McCray County Board.
Yes.
Yes.
And then, this is something new that we kinda wanted to add, 2018, we wanted to do like a teacher of the month, to show you guys how much we appreciate our staff. So this month, we chose Jen Sutton, and this week, or this past month, she went to WITC at Chippewa Falls with Mr. Folker, and they brought a large group of kids there, and it was a great time, and she also, Ms. Donnelly, what did she get? She had some...
Yeah, national, national board certification.
What she was very excited about, and she is always working very hard in the school store, keeping everyone in tip-top shape.
And then before Christmas break, we had a lot of holiday fun, we did an ugly sweater contest, and as you can see, the staff and the students dressed up a lot. And then Student Council had like a holiday movie day, where we made popcorn for everyone. We had a lot of popcorn, and then the students had the whole afternoon to watch movies, so that was really fun.
And we also did, instead of our genius hour, we did winter fun activities. So we did ornament decorating, snowshoeing, sledding behind the school, which everyone thought was a blast, and all kinds of fun activities.
And a door decorating contest.
Yes, and this is our door decorating contest. The band happened to win with their beautiful fireplace. And we also had an ugly sweater contest, Kayla Erickson was our winner, and she won free cookies from Student Council for the rest of the year. And the dance team also performed a great holiday dance at the basketball games.
Nice.
That's it.
Thank you.
Oh, my bad, I closed that.
Thank you, Alan Hunter. Next up is our student, staff, and community recognition. And so this evening, we have our State Honors Choir participants, and is, is...
I'm here.
Can you, can you please tell us about this, 'cause I know it's more than just trying out for a choir.
Yeah. I'm Eric Pulcell, I'm the band director, filling in for Ms. Pelvicki tonight, 'cause she's unable to attend. This fall, we had two students from the music department participate in the Wisconsin School Music Association Honors Project. It started in nineteen sixty-seven, and it's a honors project and provides musically talented students with opportunity to work directly and rehearse and perform with some of the finest conductors in the nation. They have a short period of rehearsal and then have a performance down at our state conference in October in Madison. It's a very rigorous audition process, very difficult. We have two students that made it, one is not able to be here tonight, Caleb Rata, and she was selected as a soprano vocalist with the State Honors Treble Choir, which is an all female choir. With her audition, which is very intense in the high school level, with a lot of sight reading and things in front of a lot of people, pretty stressful. But across the state, two-hundred-and-thirty sopranos auditioned, and only sixty-eight were selected for the two choirs. So she was one of those sixty-eights, it was great. Total of a hundred-and-eighty-eight students throughout the state are selected to be in the State Honors Choirs, there are two a year. Olivia Millis. She was selected to be a soprano in the Middle Honors Choir. In the Middle Honors Choir is seventh through ninth grade students. It's a very similar audition process. She is one of only twenty-seven sopranos in the state that made it into the choir this year. So that's great, and a hundred-and-thirty-five auditioned, so the choir was made up of a total of a hundred singers throughout the state. So way to go, Olivia. We're very, very proud of these students, it takes a lot of work for these kids to get in these State Honors programs. And additions for next year's are coming up in a couple of weeks. So we'll hopefully be here in a year.
Olivia, what was your favorite part about your experience in the Honors Choir?
Why did you have to ask?
Well, how about this one was one, one thing that you enjoyed about it?
Probably the, and performance in general, because I knew it was gonna be like the last moment. This is the last time I'm gonna be singing with this specific group. But like just performing out there was just such a magical moment. It was just amazing. And I'm. It's funny, Ms. Pelvicki, she chose a different version of one of the songs I sang there. So I had a complete freak out in choir and I got so excited. And I just thought about that moment and it made me so happy and sad at the same time. Because I really miss singing with those kids. I mean, I only, I only know a few of them like to this day and I didn't, you know, I didn't really get to know a lot of them. Because you only have a specific amount of time. But it's just, it's just so great to be able to sing with a bunch of pretty much strangers from around the state. And then just like for them to become family like that quickly. It's, it's just something you can't beat. So, yeah.
Thank you. I'm sorry, what grade did you sing in?
I'm in ninth grade currently. I tried out in eighth grade.
And it takes quite a commitment on the parents' part too. So thank you for supporting your endeavor. Way to represent us.
I have a certificate for you, Olivia. Thank you so much for all your hard work and for representing our school so well. There you are. Thank you. So we have an opportunity now to enjoy some cake, to celebrate, Olivia. And so it's currently seven fifty-three, so we will take a ten minute recess and resume a little bit after. All right, we will resume our regular session meeting of the Somerset School Board on Monday, January fifteenth at eight oh eight PM. The next item on our agenda is item three, the open forum. I have not yet received any red cards noting that anyone wants to speak during the open forum. Is there anyone in the audience who's wishing to speak this evening? So hearing none, we will move on to item four in educational delivery and learner connectedness. Item four A is open enrollment. The recommendation is that the school board approve the two thousand eighteen nineteen open enrollment chart as presented. Is anyone willing to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
And is there a second?
No second.
Thank you. So we have a motion made by Marie Colbath and seconded by Catherine Cranston to approve the school board, the two thousand eighteen nineteen open enrollment chart as presented. Is there any questions?
I appreciated very much your explanation of that, Dr. Beazik, in the way that you presented it. Because I had never thought about it as being so limiting when we put those class sizes at those lower numbers. And putting it at thirty is not saying that we're definitely gonna put them at thirty, but it's opening us up to more open enrollment, which I had not even considered, not, didn't realize.
So I had gone through.
Yes.
I waited a little bit, I paused. And, you know, I added up the available seats. If we use this thirty and thirty-five going to, and it's an additional four hundred and forty-eight. Now, I know everybody says it's not gonna go up, four hundred and forty-eight. But I wonder, once we go up to say thirty kids per class or thirty-five kids, does it ever go down from there? And I'm kind of doubting it. So I'm hesitant to say that that should kind of be our policy. And I know that it's, it's affected by the number of sections that there are for, in the various grade levels. So, you know, the reason why there are, would be sixty-three available seats in kindergarten is because there are five sections. And if we say there are, you know, you know, thirty is the maximum level of kids per, per section, right? It's per section. Then that, that would seem like we'd have sixty-three seats available. And I'm having trouble with that because I feel like if we say, okay, we're gonna approve this, we're not gonna do it, but we're approving it. I think it makes us look like really poor planners. You know, like if we rather have it in smaller increments or add on. I get that there's a problem with zero and I don't wanna see that. But I wish that there was something in between four hundred and forty-eight and zero. And I, like, I know in, in tenth grade on this chart, it says that we have almost thirty-three kids, thirty-two and three quarters. And our current limit is thirty-five. But that's if you only consider four sections. If we were to add a fifth section, then we would be well under. Right?
Well, I don't know if the sections argument works for tenth grade as much as it does for elementary. Because you can't just, in elementary, you can add a teacher, add a section. But at tenth grade, adding a teacher is a lot more complicated because of content.
Right. And I totally get that. So, but we've done that in the elementary level grade. So I guess what I'd like to see is not moving up in the maximum for the elementary. Because we've added sections in the elementary in order to keep those class sizes down. And, but I don't know. Tell me, tell me what you think, Mark.
Well, you know, I think the more, I do, I totally get it, but it's how you read it. I think this more is ridiculous. I don't know why they have it. Well, I understand why, but to me, it's kind of, it's ridiculous. Because we don't have, we don't have a class size policy here. And I would totally advise you not to put one in. But we have a good guideline on this right column. And I think, you know, as Catherine said here, you've got great class sizes here. I mean, that's something we should celebrate and appreciate as long as we can afford it. And we can afford it right now. That's why I focus on the right. And like I mentioned last time when we spoke about this, I just hate to cut ourselves short on any opportunity. I don't think we're gonna see a huge jump next year. You know, we may, we'll encourage. I don't think we're really gonna be, I think, I think in two years, we're really gonna have to look at this because I think that's when that development will be coming around and we'll start seeing some influx of students in our system. For next year, I would hope we get some kids. I mean, that's, we're gonna be losing, I think, another thirty, forty kids next year through the system, just through attrition. Now, again, with all the building and what have you, you know, how soon will these kids come in? Eventually they will. But my gut's telling me we're not gonna see that for another couple of years where it's really gonna make a difference. But we don't have a class size policy. So everything is kind of guideline with our past practice. And I think if we focus on that right column, you know, and if we get kids in, you know, there are different ways of breaking class sizes down so we can keep them in this range. And that's really about affordability too. Can we afford to do this? And like I mentioned, we can do this now and keep these class sizes. We've got things that, we've got class sizes up at high school that are somewhere ridiculously low. And we're looking at ways to reconfigure what we're, what we're doing over there. One of the suggestions to the, you know, at the elementary level was, you know, we need help. We know we need help in some of the areas, you know, socio-emotional counseling and what have you. Is there a way in this in-between time while we can still keep staff on? Is there other duties, other things they can do to help with rather than if it wasn't inside of a classroom full time? If it was working with different groups? I think, Catherine, you mentioned.
They're called behavior intervention specialists.
Yeah, intervention specialists. Things like that that could help us because we know, we know what some of our bigger issues are that we need to deal with. And there's more than one way to skin a cat there. And this may be some way of doing this. But bottom line is I just, as I said before, I hate to short suit ourselves by showing zeros. Because once we show zeros, we can't, we can't take them in there. So whatever number you choose with these class size, Katie, you know, I don't care. I just, you know, my, what I wanna see, I just wanna see we have some room so we can still encourage kids coming in here. With the class size and capacities, you know, like I mentioned before, I think the elementary and middle school are pretty close to what these are. The high school though, you know, that's what Wold will tell us when they come in to do our facility assessment. They'll take all those class rooms, deliver their class sizes and we'll see what design capacity is for today, which is different than building capacity. Because design capacity is always lower than building capacity.
So is this a form that we have to use? The state requires it?
They do.
So that part of my concern is that, you know, we're not all going to be here forever. And so people will be tempted to look at this form and say, well, this is our policy. This is our policy. We're saying thirty students max in grades JK through eighth and then thirty-five in high school.
Mark, can you remind us of what the, these number of available seats makes us, makes the school district accountable to? So like for ninth grade for next year, if it says that twelve seats are available, if thirteen students apply for open enrollment in ninth grade, what does that number mean for our school district?
Well, once we hit zero, we can't take them.
So if that number of avail, oh, so the first twelve.
Per grade, per grade, yeah.
Are accepted and once we get thirteen, we can no longer accept them.
I don't like this, but it's.
Unless you created, if you created another section in the middle of the year.
Yeah, and Katie, I'm gonna, that's what I was gonna tell you. I, I hear you because I, I too remember the first time I saw this thinking, oh, my God, I don't ever want to give an elementary teacher thirty. And so it has happened though, Marie, can attest to this, that all of a sudden our kindergarten classes were at thirty and at twenty-eight, twenty-nine. And we didn't have space. And so rather than add a section, we gave each one of them an EA. And so the board can at any time go in and say, oh, my gosh, we need another section or we need some EAs. You know, you, you don't have to wait till it gets to thirty kids. The board has the discretion at any time.
And Katie, it gives a cave my tag. When we did this form originally, three grades, I wanna say first and fourth would be completely capped and not allow any open enrollments in for next year. And third grade would have allowed just a couple of students. And some students, it always happens, are gonna move out this summer and go somewhere. But this doesn't take that into account. And so all of a sudden, we're capped, can't allow new students to open enroll, but our numbers will actually go down. And so I, I, thirty students is, is not realistic that it will happen. But what it does is allow opportunities for kids to come in that, you know, otherwise may not be able to if you cap them off. And so that's, that's what this does is allow for that open enrollment to take place. You can get some new kids in who wanna come here, which is a good thing.
So I think this chart is confusing because it's a projection tool for how many seats are potentially available in each grade level. What the actual class sizes are and how much, what the actual sections are, are up to administrators and the board at that time. So all it really does is cap how many students we can accept.
In open.
In open enrollment. And puts essentially a cap on how open enrollment can contribute to growth in that particular grade level. For example, if another twelve kids moved into our district and were residents in ninth grade, our ninth grade, if there were twelve open enrollments and twelve residents, our ninth grade class could go up by twenty-four. However, if a, and a thirteen, number thirteen student applied for open enrollment, we would have it in place that we could deny them or had to.
Or add a section.
But, but do we have to deny them at that number if we hit thirteen? Or is that where we can deny?
If there's zero capacity, we, they're done, unless we add another section.
So Katie had some questions about essentially really the total capacity of the building and whether or not that number of four hundred and forty-eight our buildings could handle. Wanting to, yes, have the welcoming, we can accept kids, no zeros, but also being thoughtful about thoughtful growth. And so what Mark and I did is on that Somerset open enrollment chart, the first tab, that is two thousand eighteen nineteen available space, is what was originally sent to you. The second tab that says copy of is the exact same information, but we added some calculations in there. So we updated the capacity for the high school to six hundred. So potentially a number to estimate the capacity of our current buildings would be seventeen oh five. This number of enrollment is based on last year because we use last year's enrollment to fill out this chart. However, in our report tonight, our current enrollment is fifteen.
Yeah, our current enrollment is like fifteen fifty-two, but using next year's projection numbers, it's, what did you have, fourteen?
Fourteen sixty-one.
Yeah.
Because of a grade going out.
You don't have JK anymore.
No.
Textures JK.
Sure, so we don't have students, we, oh, you're saying JK students are not in this fourteen?
We don't have our open house till the end of February.
Okay, so potentially enrollment would be around fifteen hundred, you could estimate. So what we did is we took the formula for the available seats. And what we can do is we can punch in different numbers there to see how that changes the total. If any board members are interested in adjusting those numbers. So like for myself, I would prefer to leave the high school at thirty-five because otherwise we won't have any open seats in the ninth and tenth grade. And I trust our administrators to ensure that we have appropriate class sizes using our staff. So I'm confident we won't get to that point, but that allows for open enrollment. But if you're interested in, like, for example, I punched in twenty-seven for second grade, looking that we, you know, potentially our highest right now through fourth grade is twenty-six. So are there some numbers that anyone would like to have me put in here for a maximum seat to see how that affects the total possibility of growth?
No, I think our discussion for me, I mean, I. I just don't like the form.
No, I don't either. I think it's, you know.
And I think I had the same issue last year, so I apologize.
No.
And you look at it, because it went up last year too. And so, and I feel like, well, when will it ever go down?
And this may, you know, so we could leave the numbers away. We're gonna may have the initial because we never know what's gonna shove at our doors. You know, because you always have the last minute, oops, here's my twelve kids, I forgot to register them, tape them. And we have to. Or they move on, they don't tell us.
I mean, it's certainly easier than the numbers that we had before, which were twenty-four or twenty, twenty-two.
But I think, you know, again, if you go back to this right column, you know, that's our standard.
Yeah.
You know, and we, you know, that's what we, you know, that's what we hold to unless we have, unless there's.
Something happens.
Something exceptionally happens and, you know, again, like it's Catherine said, I mean, that's a great selling point for us to keep in that way.
It really is. It really is.
And right now we can.
Okay.
I like thinking like Pirates of the Caribbean, just guidelines.
I have lots of those in my head. You're okay. I don't wanna start messing with their numbers.
Well, it's not messing with their numbers because it's on a totally separate sheet. So if you want to see that, we can punch things in.
Thank you though. We'll keep them easy, thirty and thirty-five, I mean. Thank you for the explanations and the discussion.
This sheet had some real significant budget impact, but it really doesn't.
It's a guideline.
It is, it is.
And it is something that we will, I think, need to look at closer if we do see growth. You know, if a development goes in over here and we're seeing great growth, I do think it's something that we'll have to consider more closely. I do think it's something that we'll have to consider more closely, looking at the capacity of our buildings. However, districts that don't accept open enrollment in some grade levels, you miss out on other enroll, open enrollment opportunities because often a family that is looking to open enroll, if one grade level for one of their children is closed, then they choose not to bring their other children. So I think it's a great goal to not have any zeros.
Something else that happens too is once, especially in the younger grades, once you get them here, they'll stay. And if we don't get them in, you know, they'll go somewhere else in those first couple of years, they don't come back.
Any other questions from board members? Bruce? Good with the thirty and thirty-five?
I understand the thirty and thirty-five.
Are you comfortable moving to voting on the thirty and thirty-five or do you have anything to add?
I'm good with both.
All right. So we have a motion made for a Marie Colbeth and seconded by Catherine Cranston to approve the two thousand eighteen, nineteen open enrollment chart as presented with maximums of thirty students in grades JK through eight and thirty-five at the high school in order to create openings in all of our grade levels. All those in favor of the chart as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against? So the motion passes five to zero. All right, next round, item five, services and facilities. The first item is five A one, which is a recommendation that the school board approve policy one four six zero, physical examination as presented. Is anyone willing to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Marie. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Katie.
Katie wants to be the one to vote, so I can switch that.
Oh, gosh. So we have a motion by Colbeth and a second by Thermos to approve policy one four six zero, physical examination as presented. Any questions? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes five to zero. Our next item is item five A two, a recommendation that the school board approve policy five five four zero, the schools and governmental agencies as presented. Is there a motion for that one? Katie, is there a second? Thank you, Catherine. So we have a motion by Thermos, seconded by Catherine to approve policy five five four zero, the schools and governmental agencies. Any questions?
Is, is this a change of any kind? Because I didn't see the first reading or any of that.
I do not believe so.
Pretty standard.
But I, most of the conversation was that asking, I think, the board to review the intent of the policy and verbiage to be familiar so that Mark could implement it to its full intent.
Okay.
Does that accurate?
Yeah, there may be some changes coming up when we start dealing with our liaison officer and what, I mean, that's. Decision, but right now it's good to go.
Okay.
And I think there was language to follow the juvenile justice code.
Yeah.
So that was the one updated language that. Any other questions? All right, all of those, we have a motion by Thermos and seconded by Cranston to approve policy five five four zero, the schools and governmental agencies. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against? The motion passes five to zero. The next item that is for discussion is item five A three, which is policy five four six zero, graduation requirements. So this is technically a third reading. Are there any clarifications to share on that one, Mark?
Yeah, we had, let's see, was it on the reading?
Yeah, the reading was in there. It contradicted itself.
I do. I think from the notes that I received from, I think it was a work session when you talked about it, there was a question about this one in the paragraph regarding students with disabilities who probably complete the programs and their IEP. Basically will be awarded diploma and then there's a little statement in parentheses saying, provided the student satisfied the district's high school graduation requirements. And I would propose that we just delete that sentence. Frankly, I'm not sure how Katie and I missed it, but it definitely, yeah, contradicts the first two sentences right above it. So I don't know if there was any additional questions with that policy, but that was the, the message that, just for some additional clarification, I certainly think it makes sense to delete that piece in parentheses, so.
So that would be like on page two?
What section is that in?
First page.
Yeah, it's right on the first page.
The first page, yeah, sorry.
Paragraph?
Students with disabilities.
Okay.
I don't know that this is the official, you got it, yeah, sorry.
And again, I, I wasn't here for the last discussion too, but I think there was maybe a question about the, the reading class as well?
Yeah, there was.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just, I was, because it said it was no longer required. So I was wondering if we were just gonna, all in all, is this gonna be an elective on its own? Or if we were gonna get rid of that half credit and add another elective credit?
Yeah, so, you know, the discussion about the, the reading requirement has been kind of ongoing, I would say, for at least probably two or three years. My understanding is that this was put into place really kind of before we started any type of RTI system. You know, certainly to, to provide support to students in the high school that weren't kind of where we wanted them to be with reading. We are finding now, and I can speak specifically, I guess, for this year, that the amount of kids that are below the twenty-fifth percentile coming into the high school is so minimal that actually we were supposed to run the reading class this next semester and we don't have enough kids to even run it, which is a great problem. Students that we are identifying, actually, we use the FastBridge assessment with our ninth and tenth graders this year, using that data, any students that we're identifying that are kind of even on that bubble. First semester, we provided them reading intervention through our homeroom time. So they're still getting that reading intervention. Certainly, we're not just kind of ignoring it, but the, the necessity to have a whole entire class that actually in our six-period day takes up one full period of that time, we found there just really isn't a need for that anymore, which is a good thing. So more to come on that specifically for next year in particular, as I bring some more information to you, hopefully to the next work session regarding master schedule changes for next year and how we plan to address, you know, students that still need some of those interventions. Any students right now too that potentially are underneath that twenty-fifth percentile that are served with an IEP, we're having discussions of how to make sure that they're getting those interventions specifically with that special ed teacher. So good news, you know, we've just, we just don't have a whole lot of kids coming to the high school right now that are below that twenty-fifth percentile. So we're, we're finding some other ways to creatively meet their needs without having to take up an entire period, so.
Anytime we can take a requirement, like in this situation, it opens up a lot of those. Especially that six-period day is just a killer, so as long as this is the place to.
In your estimation of that, the ones that are scoring below the twenty-five percent, is, is the majority on IEPs?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So an intervention run through their special ed teacher?
Yep.
Because most interventions are not going to be an hour long.
Right.
They're gonna be twenty to twenty-five minutes for six weeks at a time.
Right. So next semester.
So why use an hour? That's crazy.
Instead of running the reading class, Sarah Crybek is actually going to run kind of a organizational skill. I mean, she's actually kind of doing an intervention, you know, third hour that we're gonna run some different kids through there to be able to get some of these kinds of things. We do have a couple of kids without IEPs that will get some reading intervention. But just, we feel like it's a more creative way to get them what they need without blocking off a whole period of their day with that reading class. So that was kind of the thought process behind it.
I know there have been some questions about the section for students who don't, do not meet the above requirements. Is, I'm assuming because it's still in here that you and your guidance counseling staff are comfortable with keeping that teacher committee review process?
Yeah, I think after the first time, we kind of brought it up here and had some discussion about it, we kind of went back and said, yep, let's just leave it for now and if something comes up, we'll follow these recommendations. And we didn't frankly have a better way, I guess, really, to address if something comes up, so.
You mean the teacher review committee is gonna stay in there?
Yeah, I think at this point, it, it looks like after we, we made some additional recommendations, we had our first discussion, we went back and kind of revamped. And I think it sits right now the way that we had left it the last time that I was a part of the conversation. So as it stands right now, I think it's, I think it's good from our perspective.
They said they'll meet with, that same section, meet with guidance counselors throughout the career. Is there how often are they in or?
Yeah, so. Right now, all of our counselors meet with our juniors and have junior conferences. But because of ACP coming onboard, which is a requirement through DPI, those conversations are probably countless that are going to be happening. We're really kind of starting to revamp that here or kind of pump it up second semester, really kind of infusing that, you know, quite a bit next year as well. So those conversations won't be isolated necessarily to just our juniors and seniors, but really kind of hitting our freshmen and sophomores. And again, I keep waving like, wait till you hear those ideas for our master schedule, but there's some information on that too, that we're gonna talk about how to infuse that career exploration into some things that we're doing next year as well. You know, which probably isn't outlined probably perfectly here, but right now that junior conference is, is kind of the one for sure thing that's happening that you can kind of count on. Lots of other things happening outside that, but.
We would love to evaluate this policy next year.
Oh, sounds good. Okay.
One thing that I was wondering about in the second line of the section about students who do not meet the above requirements, it talks about the guidance counselor determining that a senior student has not met the above criteria and submitting the names to the high school principal. Is that the only time that that communication currently occurs? Or is that, is this policy setting the minimum and that occurs other times throughout a student's career?
I would certainly say that's not the only time. I think the way that we interpreted that was when we're really getting it down to crunch time of like, okay, we've got one semester left, you know, let's talk about the kids that are this close from not making it. That was how we read that. You know, lots of other conversations happen with kids that are potentially credit deficient and not quite where we need them to be. But we kind of read that specifically as, okay, it's, we've got this much time left and who's struggling and what do we need to do to get them where they need to be?
Any other questions?
So this is kind of the insane just about that is that students on truant status can still graduate them?
By the letter of the law, yes. Even though a student might be truant, if they've met all the requirements, they could still.
Pull it out of the requirement.
Yeah, yep.
Shannon, if this one, if this particular policy was reviewed annually, is there a time of year that that would be most beneficial? For you and, and your team?
Probably early fall. I think that way we get through kind of the graduation season in the spring, go through the summer and then be able to kind of, you know, August, September-ish. You know, frankly, this particular policy, I, I think it's a good idea to take a look at it every year. I mean, once we kind of sat down and went through this, we're like, oh man, we're not doing this anymore, this doesn't work. And this is, this is a big one. Maybe I'm just biased now because it impacts a lot of what we're doing at the high school, but.
You're gonna be looking at this this spring if we decide to go with a different schedule.
Yeah, yep.
And then it's gonna depend on, you know, you're probably gonna look at it at first maybe every year as the schedule gets deepened. But then after that, unless something significant changes, you don't need to look at it again.
It seems like we have.
And if schedule on graduation requirements is gonna change.
Potentially.
Board members, are we feeling that we can recommend this one for approval? Would be at our regular session in February?
Yeah, we can do that now.
If someone would like to make a motion?
I'll just make that motion with the struck out amendment. And I'll second that.
So we have a motion made by Katie Thermos and seconded by Marie Colbeth to approve policy five four six zero, graduation requirements as presented.
As amended.
What was amended?
Strikeout of.
As it appears.
So as it appears with the strikeouts?
I was saying as, before we came in here tonight, it was one way. And when we, after we arrived, we struck, provided the student satisfied the district's high school graduation requirements.
Actually, those strikeouts were there for board members to see prior to this meeting.
Okay. So then as presented.
But that's part of the confusion with, with the various views of Google Docs.
Yeah, I can't remember that training session.
Okay, so we have a motion made by Thermos and seconded by Colbeth to approve policy five four six zero, graduation requirements with the strike throughs and additions available to board members and the common version of the policy as presented to board members this evening. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against? And that motion passes five to zero. So we are on to five A four, which is policy five four five one point zero one, Wisconsin Academic Excellence Scholarship, which at this point is for discussion. So board members, do you have any questions?
I think the one question was on the determination of a tie for grade points.
For this scholarship?
Yeah, and I guess I would recommend, you know, Katie and I kind of sat down and talked about this today, that we would look at LAUDA classes, look at LAUDA points and just kind of do some comparison there. If it's helpful, we could develop a sentence or two alluding to that and send it to you to take a look at. And then if that's something that, maybe, maybe you have a different idea, but that was something today that she and I thought would be certainly a reasonable and fair way if we, if we for some reason ended up with, with a tie.
Do we know how any schools that do not publicly acknowledge valedictorian and salutatorian anymore calculate this scholarship?
I don't. Yeah, so we could look at that?
I know the value of it has decreased over the years as prices of college have gone up and the value of the scholarship has stayed the same. I think it's important though that we're prepared to be transparent in how that's determined if there is something close. We do have students who like to compete for that.
So we'll let them develop and shoot it out and then we'll put them on.
Okay. So are there any other questions or comments about this policy?
Maybe that was the only one we had. But on this one was the determination of those every year. That's good.
So we will add this policy to the February work session. All right. So we are now on to item five B one, which is a recommendation that the school board approve the budget amendment as presented. Is anyone willing to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Marie. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Catherine. So we have a motion made by Colbeth and seconded by Cranston to approve the budget amendment as presented.
Could you include the total, please?
Oh, yes. Is the total on the attachment?
Yes.
So you need that in the motion? So you need that in the motion?
As presented for a total of. The chart, yep.
One hundred twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
The middle column seventeen million six hundred and thirty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty-one eighty-two.
My eyes, even with my glasses, the middle column, you said seventeen million six thirty-eight? Okay, so change up.
Yeah, we're going to clear it up.
You've got that number.
Seventeen six thirty-eight.
Thirty-five eight thirty-one point eight-two. Seventeen six thirty-five eight thirty-one point eight-two.
All right, so the motion, Marie, you're comfortable updating with the number? Catherine, are you comfortable?
Yep.
So the motion has been amended to approve the budget amendment as presented for the amount of seventeen million six hundred and thirty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-two cents. Any questions for discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the budget amendment as presented for a total of seventeen million six hundred and thirty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-two cents? Please say aye. All those against, and the motion passes five to zero. So we are now on to item five C, which is budget process presentation from Katie.
Thank you. Nancy, can I drive for a minute?
Yeah, have the mouse already set over there. The mouse, the wireless is over here, so if you'd like.
I will just.
Are we that new truck you're getting? You know, I should mention, the reason we don't go up are our p, because we're looking for you.
So I'm going to take the presentation right from the businesses services website. I just wanted to show you and inform you, this is the website that we've had for quite a while. There's a ton of links and information here. Just today, we finally went live on a new version.
This is what you're so excited about?
Yeah, it's a surprise. So same information. We kind of distributed the links so that it's clear who a good contact would be is. So I encourage you again to look, look through here. We are always trying to update and add to this, this area. So within the process presentation, this is what I'll be talking about right now. Little history, this was initially created for the purpose of, as part of the kind of onboarding of new board members. So this was supposed to be the highlights, general information. This is Somerset Finance, things we talk about on an ongoing basis, what it means, what's important, what you might want to be paying attention to and thinking about and asking about. This presentation is from last year. I haven't updated it yet. I will update it once we do a quarterly budget actual report. So I have that screenshot to capture and put in here. So this is from last year. I haven't updated it. Usually I update it for the new presentation to be made in April or May in case there's turnover for board members. But like I said, because I had brought up the financial statements at the work session, I wanted to run through this briefly. In the interest of time, I'll try to be brief. Kathy, Bruce, if you have any questions, call me, stop in, I'm happy to discuss this with you. So. What do we talk about? Why is it important? Creation and management of the budget, the oversight, forecasting and review. I'll get into that a little bit. How do we keep track of it? We use codes that are provided and stipulated by DPI. Throughout this presentation, I tried to kind of color code some of the same codes, so revenue codes or different types of expenditure codes. I just highlighted them in the same color so you can see. They do show up in the different reports you see, you receive on a monthly basis. They show up in the quarterly reports, they show up in annual things like the budget hearing. I'm just trying to exhibit where you can see them. So that's why there's the different colors. Revenue source codes, self-explanatory what a revenue is, that's the funding we receive. When you see here, I circled the two hundred, that's green. I apologize if it was kind of hard to see. I'm going to try to get much more clear screenshots when I revise this for next April or May. Sales revenues, there's a couple, and I should say, what you're looking at is a screenshot of the explanations of the summary codes that you receive every month in the financial reports. So the front of one of those reports starts with this, which is an explanation of summary code. So on that document, these are two expenditure codes, the function. On this document, it says an account designation that categorizes a reason or purpose served by a particular expenditure or made possible by a particular receipt. In the quarterly budget actuals, I call this the where, where is the money spent? The expenditure summary codes, which are blue, I will read quickly as well, is defined as an account designation that categorizes an article or service obtained from a specific expenditure. So again, in the quarterly reports, I call this the what. And we sort these a couple of different ways. I have the, these little stars here and then on each of the reports, those are the names of the reports. And again, if you look at this online, it's a little clear, it's kind of hard to see here. But these are the receipt listing that's on a monthly basis. Here's the check listing that's on a monthly basis. Sometimes the treasurer or any board member will look at the checklist and call me or email me, say, hey, what's this check? Give me a little more information about this. And so this is where you find that. And again, you can see different expenditure codes there in summary and a revenue code. Here again, these are monthly financial reports. The top left one, that's a function report. Lower left is an object report. And then the right-hand side is a combination function and object. You receive this every month. The last one, on a monthly basis, is the, these are revenues by the revenue codes, the revenue order codes. The other, the next reports that where you'll find coding and discussion related to that are the quarterly budget actual reports. This is a screenshot from one last year, it looks like the quarter two budget actuals. So you can see it here again, function, the where, object, the what, and revenue. Budget hearing, this happens once a year. This year was September eleventh, next year the tenth or eleventh. This is part of the annual meeting. This is where we get a good look at the first good breakdown of the budget as it's published in the newspaper. And it shows up in a couple of different ways. I just highlighted that it's published in summary format and then we see it in both summary and in more detailed breakdown at the budget hearing. And you see the different codes that I've highlighted as well. Again, all trying to reference back, these are all, it's all the same thing. This is how we talk about it. This is how we define what we're talking about. Monthly cash flow chart, this is a little different. You receive this monthly as well with the revenue listing and checklist because this is all funds, this is all cash available to the district, including debt service, receipts intended for debt service, i.e. paying off referendum bonds and so forth, which are intended to be segregated from like fund-ten general apps. So this is just a snapshot of the position, the cash position of the district. And I break down kind of where it's coming from, state aids, tax receipts, and so forth. This is last year's timeline. The current timeline is on the business services website. We talked about it also at the budget hearing and annual meeting. Budget planning calendar with a general breakdown. Major expenditures to this, I will add, we have discussion items for admin and board, but now we're having also these department breakdowns. So this is, that, the intent of those, you'll remember, we just had one so far, but the intent is to give the board some information. What does the department or area spend their money on? Give you the opportunity to ask questions and say, hey, you know, when I'm talking to Joe Citizen or Jane Citizen and they ask about IT, what do we, what do we do? Or what's IT about? So I want to know more about, you know, do we have a lot of software? Do we, or we're going to one-on-one, one-on-one? What are we, what are we thinking about? So I'm adding that to this. Obviously, the biggest components for expenditure, personnel, contracted service, physical plan. Discretionary budget, you know, isn't as big as we would necessarily like.
What were those three again? Personnel, contracted services, and?
Physical plan. Major revenues, this, again, will be updated. That is the revenue limit formula document. That's per DPI. This is finalized per DPI, October fifteenth every year. I kind of, the intent of this was to highlight, this is the calculation. This is what happens, how we get our calculations for the large part of our revenues. The large pool is about ninety percent this year of our revenues come from revenue limit sources for operations. This was, like I said, last year's, which was the second year of the biennial state budget. And so I was talking specifically about, oops, the fact that there was zero per-member increase. And so with declining enrollment, our revenue limit as calculated had been declining over time. Now, this year, again, zero, but given this, this year and the next year of the state biennial, we do have additional revenues in pupil, pupil, per pupil aid, which is based on the count from the revenue limit, but it's not within the revenue limit. So it's, I discussed this actually in another document you can find on the business services page, related to budgeting, but it's kind of changing. It's related to revenue limit, but it's outside of revenue limit and it's changing the makeup of the three prongs of school funding from the state. So we can talk about that some more. This chart, we went up a little bit this year just because of some, because of some one-time exemptions because we're declining. Getting a little bit in the weeds, I'm happy to talk about that with any of you, anytime. But that's the purpose of that. Major revenues, things that go into that for us, what is our student FTE membership? That is a big factor. So Mark talked a little bit about what we expect for next year. It can be hard to predict. We can fluctuate, we can, we've had a gentle decline lately. So internal review, monthly, you get reports, quarterly, you get reports. There's projects, there's ad needed. We just had a budget amendment. That is the first budget amendment that I've had since I've been here. But as needed, that's just one example. We talk about other things as well when we come up. External review, that is the financial audit and that's what you received at the work session. You can see there what it is, kind of, it's directed by DPI. They tell the auditors what to examine in a given year. There's some standard things and then they also vary in a given year. They'll pick four or five things to really dig into. The timeline, they're onsite in July or August, it's completed by December. What's important from it, what are the takeaways? You have two booklets. The one is the communication and the other is the financial statements themselves, the communication. It's got some explanations, it's got a letter directed toward the board and the administration of the district. The financial statements, to me, this is what I would look at if I were you. You know, with their, one thing, one thing I need to look at as a board member, what are the findings? Right, so we talked about this last, the last board meeting. The pages aren't fifty-seven through fifty-nine, they're, give it's sixty through sixty-two is the last of the pages. But again, same findings as every year and every district our size receives. As always, we, our auditors are more than happy to come in and get into the weeds on this with you if you would like. So again, I refer, and I will update this for the next one, all the documents, where they come from. You know, I hope the point has been made that these are things that you see a lot. And there are things, there are codes and so forth that tie it all together and hopefully helps explain and paint a picture of what we're doing on an ongoing basis. Any questions?
On page sixty, where it says identification of state major programs, is that the programs that they evaluated closely this year? So it's, it's in.
Yep.
You know, you mentioned that they do standard things and then each year they look deeply into a certain area.
No, these would be, these would be every year.
Okay.
Because it's talking about special ed and then the major state aids.
Okay. Anywhere in here does it clarify what they look at closely each year and what they looked at, or what they do standard every year and what they looked at closely this year?
And you can find the guidance for any given year online, you can access it.
Okay.
I'd have to look through and see if they specifically mentioned that year. But some years it's deeper into food service, some years it's, you know, our community yet recently hasn't been that big, but that would be something they dug into in the past.
But that's on a statewide basis?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not different for each district each year?
Nope.
It's?
There's direction for auditors, for financial auditing every year.
Okay, so what was the area that they looked more closely at?
It was brief this year. They didn't look, they were not here very long outside.
So you mentioned.
Careful what you ask.
Yeah.
I'm going to ask.
It could be because you do such a good job, very clear.
You mentioned that they could come onsite and get into the weeds a little bit deeper? I don't know what that would look, what that would look like or cover.
If you wanted to know what exactly did you examine in detail and how did you feel what things are working for you? We'd do that. If you wanted to talk about fraud, they have fraud discussions with you as board president, with Mark, with me. Do we have any concerns with fraud? You can get into that. The actual translation of school funding accounts to financial statements, they could get into that with you. So really, anything at all that's in here, any numbers or anything process related, they're having to talk.
Most districts get dinged on student accounts and lack of controls.
Sees it as being with that every year too.
Because of our site, we just don't have enough people to.
To separate out those roles.
Enough checks and balances.
Sure. Any other, I asked so much questions, any other questions?
I just really like the codes that you put on there. And I appreciate that it's able to be seen by whomever is interested.
That's true.
Yeah, that's true. As long as it's accessible.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you for all your work.
Yeah, thanks.
Putting all that out there.
Is there a number that our district sits at all the time? What do you mean? Like in here, it said, this is what we have coming in, this is what's going out. In this month, it was a million up. I was just kind of constantly looking at that. It was like two-point-eight million.
You could.
Three-five and.
You're talking about cash flow.
Yeah.
You could look at, for instance, December of last year's, right? And that would show, this is pretty slow, but. Trying to get back up to it.
If you touch that screen, would that be faster?
We're here.
Click here.
So if you, if you pulled out December, you can see through December, same as this. If you want to see the full year, you go to June. And so you would have every single month, the different types of revenues, whether it's just split as a tax or state aid or it's another receipt, whether it's a payroll or an AP payment. So that is broken down every month. So if you want to see last year's, you'll get June's. And then this is on an ongoing basis. It is generally fairly similar. The special things like last year, you would notice in December, we had, oh, I'm sorry, this is last year. So we had, this is a special exception because we refinanced some of our debt services. So you won't see one-point-seven million coming in and then going out this year. But generally speaking.
It's very similar. It's usually that's where we sit.
It's very similar, yeah, yeah. And I, I mean, like, each given month's aids or other receipts, or payroll, or accounts payable, should be pretty similar.
Dave loves talking about this stuff.
I think you should share your new page on Facebook.
That's Facebook.
I think you should ask Haja to share your new page on Facebook. Any other questions?
I don't care that you're not on Facebook.
No, I mean on the district page.
I still think it's accessible on the website, and I think that's good. I think it's great, actually.
I follow.
Maybe. I'll get in touch.
Good.
All right, hearing no more questions, we'll move on to Item 6, which is our strategy of community engagement and collaboration. This evening, we have no items for that strategy. Strategy, or Item 7, is our strategy to seek, cultivate, and develop learners. Again, we do not have any items under that strategy this evening. So, we are on to our consent agenda. There are four items for approval in our consent agenda this evening, given that we already addressed Item E, the open enrollment chart. So, is there a motion to approve our consent agenda, including Items A through D?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Catherine, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Katie Thermas. So, we have a motion made by Cranston and seconded by Thermas to approve our consent agenda, Items A through D as presented. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, and the motion passes five to zero. Our last item is Item 9, or not last, the next item is Item 9, general information. Is there any information to be shared?
I will get a note out to you about the staff social, and just what we're looking at and looking for, trying to get a sponsor.
So, the 25th that you were talking about?
Thursday, 25th, that's the choice date, Thursday.
The middle school has their conferences. Oh, that's not going to work.
Okay, I'll get back to this then, and...
I think we might need to shoot for everybody.
What is the staff social?
It is just, we just want to try to get...
We're trying to have a new event.
Just try to get everyone...
Socialize. Just us or the staff?
Everybody.
Yeah, I mean, like...
All employees.
All employees, like where?
This year, we're going to do the same.
For about just a dinner or social?
Workers.
So, as part of the board goal to work towards improving relationships, one of the items in our action plan was to have an annual social. So, we had started looking to December, December's passed, now we're looking to January, January's almost passed. It might end up being a Valentine's Day social.
Yeah, actually, I brought it up, you know, when I was in Curtis Falls, we, the administration got together, we decided, let's do something, we all kicked in, I think it was a hundred bucks, we're done with the Alps Club, and...
Up in New York?
No, it was downstairs, we had done something. Yeah, so, we did, in the basement of the Alps Center. And it was great, it was just a nice time for people to come and spend an hour or so, we were happy. Well, we just did it with our administrative staff, and that, and this might be a good one for the administration and the board. Thank you.
So, one other reminder is just that there is a regional election to participate in tomorrow for Senate District 10. And hearing no other general information, we will move on to Item 10, which is adjournments. Is anyone willing to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Marie, and then seconded by Catherine. So, we have a motion made by Colbeth and seconded by Cranston to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, motion passes five to zero, and we are adjourned at 9:11 PM.